Are you gonna mute the rest of the folks?
I can't.
Another one.
It's great when we keep having people join us. Perfect. Folks are muted, so ready when you are.
All right, it's 7:01 on Tuesday, February 13th, and I'm gonna call and order the slot in the meeting tonight. And I want to remind everybody that this meeting's being recorded for YouTube, right?
Hey!
Is there any public comment? I see none.
May I?
Yes.
All right, shout out to Tyler. He represented the town of Georgetown today in a committee meeting on taxation. The legislature was trying to fix the bill that gave our seniors a tax break. And when they made the law, they didn't allocate enough cash to cover all the towns. And Tyler, I heard from a couple of folks, did a tremendous job when he was up in State House, both acknowledging the people that were instrumental in creating the bill, and I think giving a little shove to the people that were gonna fix it. So Tyler, thanks for doing what you do up there.
Thank you, Rich.
There you go, John.
All right, I guess it's over to you now.
All right, so we do have a scheduled meeting with Stephen Sullivan of Maine Revenue Services to discuss the constitutional requirement to assess personal property taxes. Stephen is here now. Do we want to jump in with Stephen, or do we want to see how much we can get done by 7:15? Because there won't take too much.
If you're down here, you just assume jump in.
All right, do your business.
Okay, we'll be on prompt at 7:15. So in your packet, there was the minutes of the January 23rd meeting for review and approval.
I moved to approve the minutes as presented.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Vote. All right, three to zero. Perfect. In your packet, there was also a proposed, let me just write "approve", there was a proposed new ordinance from the Conservation Commission that we can pass, hold, and when we get all the ordinances passed on to legal counsel. I know that if anyone on the board had questions, the Chair of the Conservation Commission is here and willing to answer those. And we also had, oh, did you have a question?
No, I'm more, Kathy, it's clear, it's succinct. Is there a need? We've gone 50 years without an ordinance?
We have. I do believe there is a need. We are governed right now under statutes by the state, and we would like to come into compliance with the town as well. I think there's a particular need because we manage two-town properties for the town. And those, the state allows us to do that. One of the properties was transferred, some of the money for it was transferred to the town through the Conservation Commission 50 years ago. But I just think it would make, it would align the Conservation Commission with the town. It's a question of coming under your umbrella.
I haven't matched this. I haven't matched this with legislation.
Okay.
But...
Actually, Rich, the way it's presented in the draft, the legislation that creates the Conservation Commissions is quoted, it's in red, and then the black is what would be added in order to make it a town entity. So it is, we haven't had a, you guys haven't had a lot of chance to look at it. I was there when they wrote it, so I have a heads-up, you know, an advanced position there. But I think it is pretty clear what the difference, what added value is in the, is in the black paragraphs. The red is already written in the statutes.
So we may, I guess, the question I was gonna ask Kathy is the question I'll ask you. Have we made any rules more restrictive than the legislature has made in law?
No, it doesn't make rules. It's more about procedure and membership and responsibilities of the, of the commission.
Okay, a lot of our planning board ordinances, we have the opportunity to make more restrictive rules than the state allows. I just want to be clear on what there are, so we can have discussion on them when the time comes. Thanks for being here.
And thank you very much for your consideration. We're looking forward to joining the Georgetown family of governance.
And thank you very much, Commissioner Gravino. Under your review, if there were no other questions, you also had email to you, the January 31st financial statements. And if there were any questions, we could direct those to Mary. Otherwise, we are on to assessing items. There was an abatement request that I included in your packet from Ann Witty and Jonathan Taggart. And what I will say, it was actually map and lot 04R-015. The five apparently got omitted on the agenda. Mary is gonna help me go through this first abatement that is a little bit new to me as a process. The other two were straightforward. There are a couple of questions we have, so, Mary?
So what you received was a, was a request for, for an abatement in valuation on land. We currently have the land valued at $75,700. They are requesting, a requested abatement in value is $30,000. This land adjoins their home lot. It is not buildable. It consists largely of swamp and wetland. We acquired it for about $5,500 per acre, less than half its current assessed valuation. We consider it a buffer zone to the field swamp and woods nearby. A portion of this lot has potential, but very limited use as a storage lot, which is how it has been used by the past owners. So the Taggart-Witty acquired this property back in 2020 for $55,000. They purchased it from their neighbor, Tammy and Kim Sir. We have the property valued at $75,700. We have reviewed, and you see a copy of the map here that Tyler has, has given to you. That we do show this lot as being a wetland area, an inland wetland. It is a 6.3-acre lot. So we reviewed the parcels around it, meaning we looked at 15G, we looked at 15F, and we looked at 15E, those ones that are really kind of surrounding it. Those all carry the same valuation on a per-year basis that this one does. Your valuation report will show you that we do consider this property not up to snuff in that we are giving it 3.33 acres of wasteland. So we show this pretty much as a three-acre buildable lot. Our map doesn't indicate, you know, any reason that it would not be a buildable lot, although that, that is what the Taggarts and Witty seem to think at this point. So so that is where we stand.
Just by going by that and what I've seen there and of the lot, I would probably, I would deny the, I'm not for the abatement. Anybody else? Any other comments?
I don't have direct knowledge of the land. And if you think it's appropriate, I wouldn't mind having the assessor take another look. But on the basis of the facts as they've been presented, I would agree with you and deny if you want to move it that way.
Yeah, I'd take a motion for that, then.
All right, so it was moved by John. Was there a second?
A second by Rich.
To deny the abatement?
To deny the abatement, yeah.
All right.
In favor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Need to vote.
Thank you.
All right, three to zero. I will get a letter out to Witty and Taggart tomorrow.
Yeah, I have one question, Mary.
It will require signatures from all three of you.
Of course. Now, if they consider it unbuildable, and they included this because it's what's their property, if they're looking for a tax break, then an option for them not, we're not suggesting this, just an option for them would be to combine.
That's correct.
And then they would have backland as opposed to frontland, and it would be assessed at a much smaller value.
Therefore, they would only have one home site.
Yes.
Correct. One home site is your most expensive.
Yes. So I mean, the, the abatement, the refusal for the abatement makes perfect sense. They have options as homeowners of a budding and owners of budding property. If they choose to go down that path, they can.
Right, absolutely. Hey, this was a good learning lesson for Tyler to want abatement processes. We don't get them often.
That's right.
In your packet for correspondence, we had a letter to the Town Clerk from the Department of Marine Resources updating state fees on the shellfish license allocation side of things. We also had a bulletin from the Department of Marine Resources regarding the governor's move to expedite $50 million to rebuild infrastructure and resiliency projects. There was also, as I've been sending quite regularly, the e-blast from the Department of Labor, which include lots of good resources should a constituent reach out and need assistance. We included the Mamisup Association's regular legislative bulletin, as well as a bulletin about the bill that Rich gave us an update about this afternoon. We received funding request letters from Bath Area Food Bank, Maine Public, and the Bath Area Seniors Activity Center. And those letters have been set aside and will be forwarded on to the FAC. The Georgetown Recreation Committee is also sponsoring a yoga event. We put that in your packet. Anybody that wants to get flexible, go on down. The second class is my birthday. I will not be there. There was also, at our last meeting, I had brought up the letter from John Stone to the Select Board, as well as the Career Center Storm Recovery Resources flyer. Both of those things were acknowledged at the last meeting, but officially are on this agenda. We had no other items of correspondence. In terms of receipts for pumping, there were none. What we did get to under continuing items that we would cover were permits by rule for Dombowski on Tlingens Cove and Anderson and McKinnon on Ocean Avenue. Quick update for me on Town Administrator. I have been working diligently to review some of the recent changes and documents that have come out regarding the American Rescue Plan Act funding. We'll be talking about that a little bit later. I also was able to join MEMA, FEMA, and the Small Business Association to read State Park to survey some of those damages. Last week, it was last week now, it's all a blur. The State Office Representative for Senator Collins Halsey Frank had requested a meeting and came and joined me here at the town office, where we were able to talk about some of the town's needs. The largest things I pointed out to him were that we are always looking for funding opportunities that the feds would like to help us out with. We talked briefly about some of the other areas. And then really, the biggest thing that we've experienced in the last couple of months would be the storms on the 10th and the 13th. And I brought Halsey down to the wharf so he could see the damages himself. He had hoped to join us on the FEMA, MEMA, and SBA private visits on the 8th, but schedules didn't allow that. I think it's great that all members of the congressional delegation are working hard to get those two storms combined as one to make the disaster declarations easier. There's a brief mention of thank you to Woolwich, as you were aware, last week. And part of this week, we were actually having an ambulance from Woolwich as our two ambulances were in the shop. We did get ambulance one back today. And we are hugely thankful to Woolwich stepping up and helping our neighbors. And lastly, I forwarded on an email to the board from the Maine Coast Fishermen's Association on Friday. A contact of mine, Monique Coombs, from that association, is looking at potentially having her group rent dumpsters, pay for the hauling, staging, et cetera, to help folks on the working waterfront side of things on storm pickup. I told her that we definitely had some interest as we've been having that discussion. But I wanted, before I made any commitment, to at least check in with the board. And again, they're still working on some of the particulars, but I do think that's a good opportunity if we can stage it right. And with that, it is now 7:15 on the dot. I told you we'd get there. Mr. Sullivan, would you like to come join us at the table? So, just by way of background, in October, the Maine Revenue Services sent out a letter to every municipality in Maine to remind them of their constitutional requirement to assess personal property taxes. And Mr. Sullivan reached out, I believe, just prior to our last Select Board meeting, hoping to set up a time to meet with our board and go over that constitutional requirement. And we are thankful that he made the drive down to join us tonight.
Could you guys, could you shift a little bit? And get him in the picture? So everybody can see his smiling face. Thank you.
I don't know, we would be better if I stayed off camera. My name is Stephen Sullivan. I am the Deputy Director for Municipal Services in the Property Tax Division at Maine Revenue Services. As Tyler mentioned, we did send out a letter in October to every municipality to talk about personal property and the constitutional requirement to collect personal property tax. That is part of the, it is an Article 9 of the Constitution, which states that all taxes, real and personal, will be collected according to the just value thereof. Subsequent to that, we, we examined our records, and we found that there were about 65 towns that did not report our personal property taxes on their municipal valuation return. I have been contacting them over the course of this winter, asking if they would like me to meet. You graciously offered to meet with me, and I appreciate that. The purpose of my visit is just to reinforce that requirement. It is a constitutional requirement to collect personal property tax. Understand it's not the easiest tax to administer or collect, but it is, it is a constitutional requirement. That's basically what it runs down to. It is not, it's not clear in, well, it is clear in the Constitution. It's all personal property tax. So that does include personal property owned by individuals. There are exemptions on those personal individual. For instance, you don't collect tax, you don't collect personal property tax on furniture, items of less than $1,000 of value on an individual level. Practice throughout most of the state is that business, personal property tax is limited to business personal property tax. We take no stance on that at this time. But that is the practice. In most cases, it's easier, it's easier to administer. There's a limited, there's a much more limited group that you have to contact. It doesn't mean you have to look in your neighbor's garage to see whether they have a zero-turn mower or those items such as that. And it's a lot easier to collect from businesses typically than from individuals. So we understand if that is a route that a municipality takes. Also, we understand, even though the law does not say it, there's the practical matter that it doesn't make any sense to spend $20 to collect $10 of taxes. We understand that. The problem being is if you set a limit, in effect, what you're doing is creating an exemption. So if you say, we're not going to collect personal property taxes on an item less than, or an account less than $1,000, you have in effect created an exemption. And that is the purview of the legislature. And it is not allowed at the municipal level. Practically speaking, I understand there may be cases where you just let an application fall off the table. I understand that. But I just want to make it clear that there is no, no part of the legislation that allows for that.
What penalties are there for towns that don't follow through with that requirement?
It is a constitutional requirement for you to collect personal property tax. That's all, that's what I can say to you. You do, as a, as a municipal officer, you do have to uphold the constitution of the state as well. There is, there is no, there is no penalty as such if you fail to comply at this time.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Who keeps the money?
The town. It is, if you collect personal property tax, for every dollar you take in as personal property tax, it's a dollar you don't have to collect as real estate tax.
And are businesses required to report? Is there, is there some form that they're asked to fill out?
There is a process that can be done. It's typically done this time of year before your April 1st commitment. You send out what's called a 706A request. And 706A is the section of Title 36, which talks about this request. And you're asking the business to provide a true and perfect list to you. If I was old enough and could remember this, this would be called the Doomsday List in the past time. And it was actually sent out to all of the residents of the municipality to give a true and perfect list of all of their property, real and personal, at that time on April 1st. And actually, people had to come before the selectmen or the assessors on April 1st and present that list. Now we do it by mail. Send it out. You can, you send it out. There are two practices. You can send it to everyone in the municipality if you decide to do the first individual personal property. Or you can send it to just those entities that you know that are businesses in the town. And again, it is a list. You just ask them to provide a list of any, any personal property items they have. You want to have the age of the item, description of the item, the original cost of the item, and that type of thing, so that you can then assess the personal property. As part of this, there are also opportunities for businesses to be exempt from the personal property tax. And it is called the BETE program, B-E-T-E. So that is the Business Equipment Tax Exemption. For a business that is not a retail business, any item they have that was first placed in service in the state of Maine after 2007, that can be exempt from taxation. Certain conditions apply. Furniture is, is not allowed under BETE. Furniture is still taxable for a business entity. But that does give the opportunity for them to be exempt from taxation. And since it is an exemption program, the state has to reimburse the town for the loss of tax money that occurred, or the potential loss that occurred. And currently, that is at the constitutional minimum, 50%. So if they are exempt from, if they are in BETE and they are exempt, they don't get a tax bill at all for that item. The town submits it as part of their MVR, Municipal Valuation Return, every year. We then take that and reimburse the town for that 50% loss. And that becomes revenue that comes to the town. And again, that revenue can be used to offset the property tax. There is also a Business Equipment Tax Reimbursement Program that's available for businesses. That's available for retail businesses. And anyone who doesn't qualify for BETE can then qualify for BETTER. And that one, the individual or the business pays their tax to the town. They then apply to the state in the year following that tax. And the state reimburses the amount of tax at a certain level to them, based on the age of the equipment. There is a sliding scale that reduces the reimbursement amount. But the state administers that program, sends the money to them. The town gets their original tax dollar. And the state reimburses the business for that. And I don't know if there are any further questions you'd like to ask, or...
I'm still spinning in my head. If you've got something, go ahead.
Did you set the $1,000 as an example?
It was just an example. Don't hold me to it, please.
So we're very limited commercial entities in town. Really, we're down, we have the Five Islands, Woolwich, Little Store, Harbor Side. We have General Store, the pottery.
What ex?
Well, that's not a retail, and Robin Hood's close. So I guess if you were to go to Robin Hood, Director Marina.
Right.
So would each individual float the personal property? Yes. So you'd go, an assessor would go through, and they would not be in the water April 1st because they're not put until May. So we would count them on the beach?
You would, you...
This is more hypothetical.
You could do that, yes. The other opportunity is to send them that 706A request and have them enumerate it. They are doing that under, they're signing that that is a true and perfect list. They are subject to perjury if they don't comply. And don't tell you the truth.
One challenge we're going to have in Georgetown is we don't have anyone to manage, administer this program. The people that we have working are already working in the capacity of their time. So we'd be creating a job. So if we created a $70,000 a year position to collect $10,000 in taxes, that would negate the need to spend $2 to earn one. So...
Personal property tax is usually administered by the assessor. Or in your case, if you have an agent.
Contracted assessor in our case.
Right, so if you have an agent, then the agent takes that on. Certainly, they're gonna, they're gonna charge you for that service, but...
And he's also on his way out of business.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah, so for Georgetown, we have not assessed personal property tax for a great number of years. I do know that they did use to do goats and cows and things like that because I remember seeing in old books.
Sure.
So that's the only reason why I know at one point they did do a personal property tax. To back up Rich's, Rich's assessment, you really have two people that, well, one person really, but two people that, that handle any type of assessing work in this office. So I'm wondering, I know that it's a constitutional thing. We've known that, you know, since, you know, it became one, I'm sure.
Certainly.
And I think that, that the boards in the past have also considered this. One, an unfunded mandate. Okay, again, again, that, you know, you're asking us to do something we can't possibly handle without, you know, spending it out.
Certainly.
So I'm just, I'm, I'm torn on this one. I, I've been swearing an oath for a very long time. And, you know, we know that this is out there lurking. It's like a freight train. We can't stop it, but we can't do it either. You know, that we simply can't, we don't have the staff to do it.
I understand.
And that, and that's an additional burden to our taxpayers to put, to bring in another, whatever that salary is gonna be. Because it's not just personal property. It's the setup. It's the, you know, the, the checking it. It's the verifying that they did actually send back that form. And, you know, we don't, we aren't doing six when we should be doing 12. You know, and there's a lot to this assessing.
Absolutely.
And I just, you know, any ballpark on what these 65, 64 other communities are gonna do?
Some of them who are already begun assessing personal property as they, they had not been. They may have had a change of assessor's agent or whatever. And, and some of them are now going to assess it going forward. I have had towns tell me, we don't have personal property within the town. The Glenwood plantations comes to mind. The population of Glenwood is two. One is the, one is the assessor, one is the, one is the clerk. And when we said this, the assessor said, I'm the only one that has personal property in the town, and it was an old piece of equipment. They're gonna assess it at $10,000 and pay the tax bill. So they'll be in compliance. You know, it runs the whole gamut. There are gonna be towns that, when I meet with them, they're gonna say, we don't have personal property to assess. And I will take that at face value and as part of the report that I'm doing as part of these visits.
Yeah. So is there a listing of what is personal property? And what is not considered? I mean, we've always considered personal property those items that you're not paying tax on. I.e., not your car, not your house, and not your boats. If you're paying excise on them.
Right, any excise, anything that is paid, you pay excise tax on, you don't pay personal property. As far as a business entity, anything they use to produce income would be considered personal property.
The bed and breakfast.
Well, my, my thought is...
To start describing them like that, we've got so many... To start describing them like that, we've got so many Airbnb's, which we can't even start to keep track of. I mean, this is, it's becoming a logistical nightmare just thinking about it.
It has to be fair and equitable.
Right, it has to be fair and equitable.
Yes.
And you've got a boatload of fishermen that, that.
I was gonna, I was gonna throw this out because I've said it at every, every coastal community I've gone. Uh, it's always good for a laugh. If you have fishermen, fishermen, fishing equipment is personal property. It is also all new enough that it is Betty eligible. So they will not have to pay taxes on it, the town will get that income as a reimbursement. At half without, half the tax that you would have collected, if you could get them to list it. I know. Unless Georgetown is a great exception, that no fisherman in the state of Maine is going to tell you what they have for equipment. I understand that, we know that, it's what we can do, you know. If they would. I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what a trap costs or anything like that, no idea, but you imagine if they have. Four hundred of them. Multiply that by the cost of the trap, multiply it by your mill rate, and then give half of that, and that comes back to the town. That can reduce your personal, your real estate tax. It's out there.
Yeah.
In addition. For processing, and it's not nearly enough, I'm, I'm almost embarrassed to say it, there is a reimbursement to the town. For all, any applications they accept for Betty. And it's a mandated amount, we pay. Five dollars.
I was just gonna say, the Wampanoag box, laying on me.
I am just kidding, it's, and please understand, this is, I am the representative of Maine Revenue Service, not the legislature.
And question off of that, so if we did go the route of assessing personal property tax, we make that fisherman. Pay a price on all four hundred of his traps, and I'm not saying that's what the town should be doing. What happens when we have January ten storm, can that fisherman file for an abatement? As personal property abatable, or is it just lost to sea?
It, it is abatable, but if he's exempt from taxation, there's no need for an abatement.
He's not going to pay the tax, the state's gonna reimburse us.
At half.
Well, of course, but the fisherman's giving us nothing, and the state's giving us half, so.
The fisherman hasn't paid anything in tax on that equipment.
Right, so there's nothing to obey.
Did you, did you say a minute ago that? When you said, you mentioned mill rate, is the tax on this personal property, this part of the mill rate? That we set on, so it would be a, it would be taken into consideration. At the time that we. Set the mill rate. As potential income.
Yes, the, the total taxable value of the town is the value of the real estate plus the value of the personal property. Uh, you add that together, and then you, you use your, you use the formula. Uh, you know, to, to come up with a mill rate.
And does the definition of retail include? Airbnbs? Or other casual rentals?
No, it does not. Uh, retail facilities and, and for instance, you mentioned your bogeyard. Marina, that would be considered a service, it's not considered a retail facility. Because they're not taking a item away with them. So they're not going, selecting, going to Walmart, selecting a bottle of soda and walking out the door with it, that's a retail transaction. If they're going to a marina and having their boat docked for days, um, about whatever they have. Pulled out in the fall, all of those, those are services. So a service business is eligible for betting. So if you have the marina. And I, I just looked briefly at their website before I came down. I mean, they've got a crane that lifts boats out of the water, and those things like that. If they are, if they've been placed in service since two thousand seven, those are eligible for Betty. And it doesn't have to be, by, when I say that, it doesn't have to be a piece of equipment that is from two thousand seven. It's a piece of equipment placed in service in the state of Maine. So they could buy it in New Hampshire. It can be a nineteen ninety item, but when they brought it to Maine, it was two thousand eight, that item is eligible for Betty. So again, if they report that. No harm, no foul, they're exempt.
And then it goes with proving or someone checking. When was it registered, when was it? It, it's just administratively, it's a tremendous burden for a community of a thousand people. That have three folks working in the town office.
I understand.
So we, we can. Appreciate you coming down.
That's no problem, that I have filled my man, come down and spoken to you.
Thank you, Mr. Summell.
And I will also extend the fact that if at any time you wish, have you come back? And talk about this, or talk about any other property tax or municipal services, property tax related type thing. I am more than willing to come down, that's part of the job. You have my contact information, and that's it. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
And I'll also say. It's not a bad idea if you have concerns to express them to your representatives. It's the, we don't like having to administer a vague law. And if they, if a more reasonable or. Workable situation come up for towns and communities, we would welcome that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up on the agenda, we have a finance director update from Mary.
Okay, just a few small things that have been going on. Um, as you saw, I, I would think you would saw on the financial statements, we had a little over a million dollars. In taxes outstanding at the end of January, meaning we've collected quite a bit, we've moved money around to Bass Savings for a federal. Northeast and Andro, um, and we'll continue to build that, those funds there. Obviously, um, making them available at the end of next October. Um, W twos and ten ninety nines went out, um, this year, this, the, uh. Government mandated that we do, um, the majority of them online. Um, which was fine with the W twos, and then of course with the ten ninety nines. Um, we hit a snafu on those because you needed yet another password. So I actually mailed the, uh, hard copies to them with a note of explanation. Um, and haven't heard back, but, but I'm working on getting the third IRS, uh, password. Um, the audit, I reached out to our auditors, um, mostly because we have not heard from them yet. Um, my auditor, or the one that, excuse me, the audit manager that was here. Um, uh, had a medical issue and was out of the office for like six weeks, so she's back in, they're taking care of it. Um, and then, uh, we also, uh, passed on, I think the due date was this Friday. Um, the workers' comp audit paperwork on to MMA. Um, so that, that is also in the works. Um, as you know, budget season is upon us, um, so we've got a, we'll have a, a few, um. You know, little incidental questions mostly relating to, um, whether or not we're gonna still offer the same health insurance, things like that. On the school budget was presented for the first time at the budget, at the school committee meeting last Wednesday night. Um, they, they'll be having a, a budget workshop, a school budget workshop at the end of this month. Um, right now. Right now, the budget shows it being up in appropriation, I think about six percent. Um, letting them know that that's probably not workable. Um, we did sign, I have sent notices of foreclosure out to, for five parcels. Um, one of them has been paid, um, so there, there are four, um, outstanding right now. Um, they, they are scheduled for foreclosure at the middle of, uh, March. Um, I do believe we will hear from all of them. Mostly because of, uh, banks involved, um, but there's one that we may not, we may not, but, um. We currently have nothing in foreclosure, so if we do, these will be the first. Um, as Tyler, Tyler mentioned. Um. We borrowed, uh, borrowed Woolwich's ambulance last week, ambulance one is back in town, so the ambulance has gone back to Woolwich. Um, and we had ambulance two, uh, ambulance two was towed out to Darlington Brunswick. So, um. That's just about it. Yeah, that's just about it.
Thank you, Mary.
Buddy has any questions or anything? I'm right here.
I don't.
And if not, our next item up is an update from the code enforcement officer, if you want to come up to the table so we can be on camera.
Can you hand back?
Uh, so, two comments and then, uh, one kind of a pool for your input. First off, I think Tyler's already mentioned it, last Thursday, we had a team visit from, uh, representatives from Pima, Nima, SBA. Uh, and that went well, we didn't get all the, uh, properties that were on the list that they compiled. But we were able to lead them around both Five Islands area, Indian Point area, to see a variety of. Areas that were damaged in differing ways. Uh, we still don't have a, a clear timeline as to when a declaration may or may not be, uh. Pronounced, I guess, so right now, we're kind of still in the wait. Uh, I know some, even today, we're still getting calls about make, uh, filling out the assessment forms to try to continue to make that threshold. Set for the county as well as the state. Uh, I had the opportunity to go out with Dick Walker, uh, Friday. And to kind of view Malden Island firsthand, and pictures don't do it justice. Uh, and I'm gonna be working with them, they haven't made a decision on what they want to do with Cook House, but I'm gonna be working with them to see what's possible. From a state perspective as well as town. We're also continuing to work with individual homeowners, uh, with seawalls, riprap. Uh, trying to control any further erosion, as you know, the last two days of high tides. Continue to cause people concern about losing more lawn and soil, and I'm sure you're getting plenty of phone calls. Uh, well, state is trying to work with certain legislation to try to make things a little more. Uh, friendly for those that are looking for permits to rebuild docks and so forth, for instance, the, uh, I forget their. Natural Resource Commission is working to help with any replaced docks or piers can automatically be built. Two feet higher than they were before the storm, and so those kind of things are happening as well. Beyond that, uh, I, I did want to give you a, a report on, once again, for Blueberry Hill. Uh, I did, I think the last meeting, I did tell you that we, uh, we were able to work with Jerry Mitchell and Dale Savoy. To come up with a, finally, a, a doable plan on how to get a septic system in on that site. Uh, it's gonna require two pumps, uh, the tank will be up further closer to the field. And, uh, but we think it's, uh, it, it's a legitimate fix, I believe. Right now, we're waiting on them to sign that and submit the fee to the town. In the interim, uh, we did have to go ahead and, and, uh. Send off that letter that we told you about that basically makes the house unlivable until the septic is updated and fixed. Uh, that's being stretched a little bit, and, uh, the letter that was penned by Kristen. Offers the town the ability to assess charges anywhere from two hundred to twenty five hundred a day, uh, if it's being lived in. That's a little bit hard to substantiate, I recognize that this house, the, the occupant. Is causing a good deal of anxiety for folks that live around that area. Uh, when I say hard to substantiate, we know he's visiting there. However, I don't, I don't know that you can call it living there. Uh, however, the police have been making regular passes through and, you know, it's, it comes down to what is possible from a, a. Code standpoint, uh, of police officers, the county sheriff's department, and so on and so forth, uh, you know. What's possible, we, we as a town, and this is again coming from Kristen as well. Our jurisdiction, since I'm not a building official, I'm not a, I, I'm not licensed as a building inspector. Uh, we can't condemn it, and I don't know that the building is needing condemned. We are, we have called it unlivable because of, there's just, there's no setting. Uh, so finding them is basically what all we can do, I'm. Definitely don't think we're at the twenty five hundred dollar market, but. Uh, I am looking for input from the board as to how we want to proceed at this point. Uh, I know there's differing opinions on this, and I'm sensitive to that, uh, but without a. Clear, yes, he's living there, it sounds like it's been fairly quiet there since Thursday. It, it's a very gray area as to what we could do and, and be able to back that up.
I mean, unless somebody catches him there or has video or photographic proof. It would be, I would assume it'd be a very difficult, um, thing to prove, you know, it, it just.
Agreed, I, that's kind of where I'm at, but it's very frustrating to the Butters neighbors, I understand, but.
I'm sorry, pardon me, Chris, I didn't mean to interrupt you, is there a definite, a legal definition of habitation? Can he legally visit? How long can he spend there, can he have lunch there every other day? Do we have any definition that we can enforce? Cause if there are, then we can put padlocks on the doors, dead doors, we can make that house inaccessible. And charge the homeowner for that, I mean, I've seen that in other planning board stuff. So, I mean, we can get down that path, but we need a definition that we can, that's enforceable.
Agreed.
That may be something that if you are speaking with Kristen again, if she can provide us with clear guidance of what habitation is.
All right, I'll, I'll make that my next point, in the meantime, I've put a deadline on the end of the week for them to file the. H H E two hundred with the, uh, fee to the town. And that'll be at least good faith moving forward. The, as far as the, and I don't know how much is necessary, but as far as actually evicting him. Uh, the, the actual owner would have to. File an eviction and would have to basically make this a breaking and entering kind of thing, but unless she does that. And, you know, again, I understand her point of view as well, it's her son's.
But wouldn't the owner be the one that's? She, it's her house, she can make it so no one can access the house.
She could.
So she's not helping the situation, so I think the fine would go to her, it would not go to the person.
Oh, absolutely, no, there's no question there.
She gets fined.
And, and they have locked it up, they, I mean, they, the water shut off. However, I know at least one instance, the door's been broken in, so, but she has to be one to file charges on that kind of. Anyway.
But there's no water at all now. Right, the water's shut off.
It's all shut off, but it's not like he could, you know, can't be turned back on with the turn of a. Anyway, I just wanted you to be aware that we're, we're still working on it and keep you updated on the progress, so.
Does Bronwyn have a question?
Yes.
Are you, are you muted Bronwyn, or are you?
Let you. For me?
Yeah, did you have?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes, my, okay, I thought there was a court order to keep this individual out of Georgetown. Did I mishear that or misunderstand that?
I think you misunderstood that.
I thought that he had made such a nuisance of himself. Oh, to the neighbors.
Well, one, one particular neighbor, there is a court order that he can't go within a certain distance of a particular house, but that.
I see.
That's the extent of it.
But it doesn't keep him off the island or out of.
And according to the police, he has established residence. And according to the police, he has established residency there, even though it's not his house, to the point that they can't in their words, can't do anything unless she, uh, the owner takes another step.
Well, a fine might help her to do that.
Agreed. Uh, if that, if that comes down and we can establish residency, I mean, it's it's established that he is actually living there. Like Rich was bringing up, then I would just look to the select board to help determine what that should be, because we have quite a wide range of possibility there, so.
Right.
Get the definition and then we can figure it out from there.
Thank you, Chris. Yeah. And now we are on to committee updates. We have received the minutes of January second recreation committee. We were also in receipt this week of the January eleventh meeting of the solid waste committee minutes, as well as the ordinance writing workshop minutes for both January eighteenth and the twenty-fifth. As of today, we still have no new membership appointments to be made, and I would turn this over to the board for their liaison updates.
Okay, I had five, yeah, go first, I guess. It's my name's there. Um, I had two meetings for changes time. Uh, shellfish committee met. Um, they're looking at um getting some of their conservation time and other things, but they had like some cleanups for some of their accesses to where they get to the flats being sagged off baby in the primary one. All three of them had a lot of dirt or um just junk from a storm blown up. Um, they're, might do it as a conservation thing, but then they also found that there's a, a grant that they could probably use to help clean up that stuff. And get um, reemb, or you'll get money for that, so they don't have to put it into their budget and have to take out of their budget. I think my notes are a little sketchy here from that. I think they just needed to know that the town would be okay if they looked into that grant and the town was okay with them looking at that for that particular project. I don't know if there's any gray area or anything we have to be aware of. Um, and I'm, once again, I'm not exactly sure. Um, I know they mentioned Jim Peavy was gonna look into the, into that, so he might know a little bit more of the hows and whys on that particular thing. Um, but I mean, I, I didn't see any issue with it. If it was something we could do to save money on the, on the budget side of it, that seemed to make sense.
We'll just want to make sure that anything the town's committing to financially that we meet the report.
That's just it, yeah. I mean, there's, there's a couple of questions, and I, I think that was as much as anything, the question right there, as long as we were okay and it was okay for us to do it, it was okay for them to apply for that grant. So there may be, I may have added more questions to that, but that's, that was that one. Um, and then the rec committee going through their stuff and the biggest thing, oh, well, there were two things. Um, one, um, somebody asked about putting the blessing of the fleet as a item on there as that, for them to get the blessing of it. But to put it as an item on their budget with a zero thing, just as it falls under their, under their purview, and they had a question, how does the select board feel about them, even though it's a zero um, budget thing um about the um blessing of the fleet? Um, myself, I have no issue with it, and I, I wasn't about to say it was the, the board's view, just my, my view, uh, your guys. Um, if you have anything to weigh in on it, that would be.
What about?
What, they would just, they just, if it's a, as I understand, it used to be a town, you know, it was on the rec committee, and where it's, if it's recognized, then the um anything that, any on the, as far as the town insurance or the town stuff, it's, it falls under their thing, their liability, liability of the town and the wharf. And that was, that was their question, how the slutton feel, if that's, if that's appropriate for that thing or not. I know we've done it before, so, you know, in the previous um rec committee stuff.
Previously, they applied for a permit
Right.
to the town unproperty management board.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I think there was, there's, the insurance issue is if it's not addressed in that permit application, it probably should be.
Well, I, I wasn't sure. I'm, once again, that's nothing I was not totally clear on, and I've, that's why I'm asking the question to you guys, because I'm not sure.
Our insurance will cover injury on the wharf if it's a town sanctioned event or not.
Okay.
Because when people are eating lobsters, if someone twists an ankle or falls in a hole in the wharf, then our insurance for the town will cover that.
Okay.
So the, the liability insurance for blessing of the fleet or not blessing of the fleet is, is, I don't know that it's much of an issue. I know the fishermen have taken over the blessing of the fleet because it was so difficult going through formal channels on the timeline of applying for permits, et cetera. So I don't know that we're in position, select board, to say, well, yeah, the blessing of fleet's a town uh, event. Or, I mean, that, the fishermen, whoever's running it, that person or a group needs to talk with TOPMB, they're using TOPMB property, and the rec committee to see established responsibilities and a way ahead.
And I know that previously the questions about insurance had to do with things like the, the crate races and um the, you know, Ari is posting a comment, I guess. I don't see that. And anyway, um, whoever's sponsoring it should be subject to the, the same rules of usage in terms of getting a permit and following the guidelines.
That's, I mean, Bronwyn, you're aware, they moved it onto boats, so it wouldn't be on the wharf, so it wouldn't trigger a permit. That's the point where people are frustrated with the permitting process. It, it's, it's a challenge, and we can work through that. That shouldn't be a showstopper. But more is getting everyone to talk, to see how we wish to go forward with the blessing of the fleet, which is just an integral part of the fishing community annually.
For my part, I'll, I'll talk to some fishermen and see if they can get a face or somebody to be the spokesperson for that particular thing.
I think that's the next step.
Okay. Um, the other thing was, and I mentioned to Mary about it, um, they were looking at getting some uh actual paper, hard copy calendar events, because some um, yes, correct. Some people don't follow the electrical, electronical stuff, and we gave the idea of something like some, just a calendar that you can update at like the um uh, transfer station, something that like the wharf, and the one I was trying to remember and I couldn't was the one here walking into town office. You've got those bulletin boards, and I don't, as long as there's no issue with that, if they can come up with something and put a calendar of their events or upcoming stuff, put it on that bulletin board so people as they walk by. That was the other thing, and that, I think, covers everything I, I can remember right now as far as my stuff, so. Onto the next person.
Bronwyn, after you, please.
Oh. Okay, um, we have ordinance revisions from the solid waste committee. They voted on them at their last meeting. Um, and also from the conservation commission. And the harbor committee meets this week on Thursday, and they will be um, putting in a fairly simple uh ordinance revision, uh acknowledging the new program to have the um. Are you having trouble hearing me again?
No.
Okay, it was just the frowning that was getting me. Um, and I guess my question is, what process are we using? Are we, um, we're putting aside these ordinance revisions until we're ready to send all of them to legal at one time? Are we, as a select board, um, asked for our um comments at, by some certain time? Are we expecting that we should review these documents independently and share our comments with the rest of the board um, before they go to legal?
Rich has an answer, I guess.
Bronwyn, what we've done historically is the first select board meeting in March, we will have a review of ordinances, and that time we have a, the select board um will say, yes, we would like it to go to legal counsel, or no, we think you can go to the ordinance hearing as presented. Um, usually, um, for the most part, last year, I don't know, we had anything go to legal. We may have.
We had, we had a couple, but I thought you guys had agreed that we wanted legal to review them at least once.
Yeah, right.
Right.
And that, that's another thing.
And we're keeping a list of those that have been to legal or not.
Okay, different subject, but yes, legal, Kristen's gonna review every ordinance we have as part of the process. But the changes that go on into for a, for the new ordinance, the new ordinance will get passed off to legal counsel to make sure it's properly formatted in accordance with statute. Um, for changes, if they're miniscule, um, then we can make a decision at the select board to just pass them to the ordinance hearing, and Tyler will manage those. Um, and Tyler, we can sit offline and discuss how we've done it in the past, uh, and you can chat with John and and make a plan.
Absolutely.
But typically, it's the first select board meeting in March, the ordinances are due to the select board or to Tyler March first, so the, uh, March fourth, what, right, the, the beginning of March. And we will then um look at the meanings. Uh, I think it'll be the twelfth, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, so around the twelfth of March, uh, the select board should review all of the changes that are submitted to date.
I would say before the twelfth of March, so that we can uh compare notes on the twelfth of March and move the whole thing forward, right? Because we already have so many of them in hand, and presume some of them, there are a lot of changes to TOPMB, uh, significant new issues with the conservation commission, and um, not mu, not many uh word changes in this, the um solid waste ordinance, but significant changes in uh at least one definition that I'm sure everybody will want to pay attention to. Um, that's basically my committee update.
Thank you, Bronwyn. And I just want to acknowledge to the folks in the audience real quick, we did receive a few chats on Zoom. Speaking candidly, I am not able in the middle of a meeting to keep up on all the chats and be present here. So apologies to folks, but everyone's back in, so I just wanted to clarify.
And thank you for that. And public comment on step on your, public comment for chats that will go on will be or can be reviewed at the end of the meeting if whoever drafted that wishes to comment on it.
Perfect. Yep.
So we won't interrupt the meeting with chats going back and forth. Okay, um, quickly, TOPMB, uh, there was a memo that went out on using ARCA funds. They've made a decision that their next meeting on the twentieth of February, uh, they will discuss the uh repair of the wharf and how we're gonna pay for it, and they'll forward that decision to the select board. Um, for the planning board, they've doing a lot of work on ordinances, and um, they had a workshop also for ordinances. Kristen was invited. Unfortunately, I had fire department training that evening, um, but they are moving forward with ordinance changes. I imagine they'll hit our target of the beginning of March to uh have all changes in, and that's what I have as far as liaison updates.
Awesome. And with that, we're over to board member updates.
The only thing I can think of is I've got, after the fire department asking and the conservation committee asking for the last however long, we've got some posts in, I've got two signs in on the Williams Road where the water goes over, so they can tell how deep the water is over the pavement, and we don't have the reflectors yet on all of them, so they can tell where the road is in relation to those posts, so, but it's a start, so.
And it is progress.
It's progress.
Awesome. Richard Bronwyn, any board member updates?
Bronwyn, after you, if you'd like.
Sure. I, I want to update you on the status of um personnel evaluations as personnel liaison. I've been working um on a, a method to uh incorporate feedback from active members of the fire department into the annual review for the fire chief. And um, after some uh hiccups, because we thought we could do it online and uh Survey Monkey didn't want to do it um for free. Uh, and then we thought that we would distribute uh hard copies of this uh evaluation survey at a big meeting, and it turned out to be a training meeting, not a big meeting. So we mailed the uh surveys, and we've been getting responses um probably eighteen or twenty at the moment. They will be uh reviewed. We put a deadline of uh the fifteenth uh close of business this week. They'll be reviewed as a, as a group, and um the select board will also be asked um for independent uh responses. Uh, that form is in the works and should, should be available to you guys. If not, by Thursday, certainly by Monday. The point of all that is to gather this uh, these responses together for me to have an interview with, with Brian to, to convey the summary of all that and allow him the opportunity to um say whatever he has to say, and if, after all of, and I'll do a summary for all of you, the relevant staff and the select board uh of that conversation. And if you feel that you would like to discuss specifics further with Brian, then we can schedule an executive session, but we'll get a written report into his file and move on to the transfer station employees. That's the plan.
Thank you, Bronwyn.
That it, Bronwyn?
Yep.
Okay, uh, road posting for the commissioner, we have any idea, Woolwich, Rosesec, uh, Dresden, they, the roads are all posted. We have a.
Did you go to your house today?
Pardon?
Did you go to your house today?
I did.
Okay.
Is my road posted?
Yes.
God bless you. Thank you, Dad.
It was Monday, by the way, we.
There you have it. So that's.
Yesterday, the roads were posted.
And now, this is important for folks that may be looking at rebuilding uh seawalls and everything else that cement trucks can't drive down posted roads.
No, the, the dad actually called a bunch of contractors and stuff.
And I'm, I'm just letting the general public know for Allison's uh
Yep.
blast that um there are additional hurdles when the roads are posted. Um, okay, and I have um maybe a change of heart with this ordinance fee ordinance. Uh, something came up recently, and someone asked me if they could rent First Church as an example, and um well, if we, do we need an ordinance for the select board to set a fee for something that doesn't have a fee? And I don't know the answer to that. We know that we can go into the planning board and say, any fees associated with building, the select board is in charge of. I don't know, and Tyler, if you can try to find out.
I will.
How the select board can establish a fee for an unusual event, if someone came in and requested to do something.
With the state that it's in right now, could we even, would it even be viable to do anything with that? I just, I'm just.
Depending what it was.
No, I, I don't think we want to do it, but uh, but as an example, I, I accept it. Uh, that, that has occurred to me as well, Rich, in that we, there may be a service. Oh, I don't know. Say we're gonna charge for transfer station stickers after the second one. Do we have the power to do that without, it's a fee that doesn't exist right now? Can we inaugurate it at the select board level, or does it have to go back to somebody else's ordinance?
Right, that, that's along the lines of, can we ascend without an ordinance covering ordinances? Which is telling me that. Which is telling me that I'm saying that. Can we establish a fee without some sort of written order from the board?
I'll gather that info.
And.
And it's great to hear, Rich, that you've got a change of heart.
Oh, no.
Possibly.
Oh, no, it's, it's bad. I think that's all I have for liaison updates.
All right. Thank you. And we are now moving on to old business. And the first item is an appointment of a Georgetown representative to the Patent Free Library Board of Directors. At our last meeting, it was, would you like to speak to this, Bronwyn?
I'd like to move that we appoint Lauren Bray to that position. She's ready to serve and well qualified.
All right, it has been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Any discussion? Nope, ready for vote?
Yeah.
I'm in favor.
Three to zero. Perfect. The next item of old business, and we will get this off to Lauren. And to the Patent Free Library tomorrow. The next item on the agenda was a discussion of dedication and rededication of ARPA funds. In your packet, there was a memo of thoughts that we've been bouncing around here at the office just in relation to ARPA funds. I'll do, and let me add Jen back in. Let's get it dropped. All right, just a little bit of background, the town of Georgetown received just over $113,000 in ARPA funds. Some of those funds have already been expended to EMS first responders and frontline workers. $48,000 and change were dedicated to the First Church. A remaining $56,000 and change was undesigned. In the intervening years, progress has not been made at the First Church. Estimates for structural and foundation repairs came in at just over $130,000. That was several years ago. Additionally, additional mold, lead, and asbestos remediation would bring the total cost to around $200,000. And it's worth noting that there were $120,000 in the church reserve fund. This is in addition to $120,000. This $120,000 in addition to the monies that were already dedicated.
Mary, is that accurate? 120?
$119,000 is sitting in the fund? Remember, a few years ago, we had, we had asked the town for $100,000 to do the, to do the review and, you know, to, and, and that money got moved over, so that's why it's got 119. So the 48,000 is a separate fund.
I thought that we allocated the additional 56,000 to the church at town meeting last year.
No, the 48, the 48.
We didn't do anything with the 56.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's my understanding, anyway. I'll check it, but yeah.
And a couple of important dates, all ARPA funds have to be dedicated by December 31st, 2024. That also includes dedication, if it's going to be monies expended after that date, you need a contract in hand. Those funds have to be spent by December 31st, 2026. And no changes are accepted after the end of this year. There were some rules changes to ARPA recently, allowing for emergency relief from disasters, some surface transportation projects, and some program administration, the town is now eligible to incur some of their hours for reimbursement. It's also worth noting that there have been changes to allow for claimed lost revenue. I would like to just put an important disclaimer to the board as we think about any of it. Any monies that we spend with ARPA cannot be reimbursed later by other federal dollars with the Stafford Act. And next week, the TOPMB is going to meet to discuss, I believe, the email that was sent out. Just to get this conversation started, some ideas to consider, and I just wanted to throw these out. You know, we've clearly found some need down at the town wharf, whether it's a new float side decking, they're working on the main decking now, erosion over by the dumpsters, et cetera. I also want to just let folks know that our energy audit with the climate resiliency project is due to us by the end of this week, the initial draft. There may or may not be items included in that recommendation we'd want to consider. There are two options for lost revenue, I spoke with Amanda Campbell up at MMA last week about lost revenue. And effectively, towns can either opt for an option where they have a standard allowance of recouping up to $10 million, which we're well beneath. Or option two, you could calculate what those lost revenues are based by a very complicated formula. That doesn't make sense to me. Item four there, I threw down plans for Williams Road, et cetera. I just merely put that down as a thought, are there parts of town that we'd like to see engineering plans? Or something done that maybe this money could help towards, that's not hitting the actual budget? And again, you know, planning ahead is a good thing. Five, are there other things that we haven't considered? We've got this pot of money, we've got a countdown clicking on when it has to be dedicated by. But I want to make sure we don't go one direction without at least thinking some of the others. And, you know, I have some timeline questions at the end, but that's the background I've been able to gather. I hope my three pages are better than 93 pages of FAQs, which I read almost all of, but I did skim. So at the end, I would turn this over to you guys for some discussion thoughts, et cetera. There also was a quote attached to that, just showing the cost of that potential float that the TOPMB was hoping to look at replacing anyway as part of the storm damages. And I see Bronwyn's hand is up.
I, I have two questions, Tyler. On the reimbursement for government services, is there a standard calculation by population base or something? I mean, obviously, we don't have a $10 million budget, so we couldn't have lost $10 million in revenue. So they're not going to give us $10 million. But is there a standardized way of calculating if we chose to apply for that?
There is a standard calculation under option two that is a little bit nuanced and caught. For instance, you'd want to look at a trend over several years of excise tax that was coming in. And then during the COVID years, did we see a drop, et cetera?
No, 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 I'm talking about option one.
Oh. Option one, it's a, if you have less than $10 million in ARPA funds, my understanding is that if you went with that, it's just a standard checkbox. We lost less than $10 million in revenue and you could claim it.
Whatever you said it was, up to that.
Yes. And that was something I reached out to MMA about because I was a little bit confused too, because that seemed almost, I don't want to say too good to be true, but seemed a little too good to be true. And I could get you some more info on that, but.
Well, I just, you know, it's, it's important because it's easy and tempting. But at the same time, it's, when you look at the calculations originally, when they were talking about lost revenue and additional expense, we didn't have any, provide any of the services that would have incurred those losses. So it's, it would be an arbitrary number. My second question is, why would we need a special town meeting?
So the special town meeting would be in the town of Georgetown, the legislative body technically is town meeting, it's the.
No, I know that, but what's wrong with June?
May I, Tyler?
Oh. I think Rich could, but if we wanted to have a special town meeting, for instance, if we were looking at using ARPA funds to go in the direction of a new float, we may want to try and, one, once we know if that's the direction the town wanted to go, dedicate the funds, be able to commit ourselves to a quote, because even at the bottom of that quote, it was only good for two weeks. And when we get towards the summer, if we waited until June to do it, cost could go up, but we also would potentially be impacting a very busy time down at the wharf. Whereas if we had a special town meeting earlier, we could potentially get that new float in, out, replaced well ahead of crunch time, when we're going to have a lot of residents, tourists, and the like down at the wharf.
Time of my schedule. The wharf, the floats go in, the wreck floats, the Walden float, Malden floats in April. So we're targeting the float to go in while the crane's there. That's, it's deconflicting with the busy season, but it's to put it simultaneously in the water with the wreck floats and the Malden floats. So we don't have to contract crane twice. That was the big reason why we would get a float order sooner than later.
Okay. Did you hear that, Bronwyn?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
And it makes perfect sense. I just, um, so there's no option to spend the money and dedicate the money to, to reimburse that expense?
Yes.
Yes, no, there's no option. Let's say, yes, we have no bananas.
Right, yes, we have no bananas. We cannot take money from the reserve fund at the wharf and buy a new float. And then in June, a town meeting reimbursed that reserve fund with ARPA funds. That is strictly against the rules. So we'd have to front load it. And there's, the TOPMB right now is considering, and that's kind of what I was talking about. They were going to discuss more fully on the February 20th meeting. Currently, we have two 12 by 20 floats, and they are not as practical as one 12 by 30 float. And to make up for the lost skiff room, there would be a 10-foot finger put off of the end of it. So we'd be replacing two floats with one float and a finger. It would be less wear and tear on the joints with the wave action, et cetera. And it would also give us an opportunity to take floats out of the water for six months at a time. And we could take the existing floats, rehabilitate them, and put them in next winter. And we can take this commercial float out of the water and prevent damage of the North Atlantic beating it up all winter long. So there are some advantages, but the TOPMB, of course, it's their wharf, their money. They have to ask the select board for the use of any ARPA funds, and we have to consider that.
And they will be meeting next Tuesday.
And it sounds like they might need a permit to change that much. And I say that only because we had to get a permit from, first from the planning board, then from the DEP, and ultimately, the Army Corps, when we wanted to change the configuration of the floats at the wharf. And part of that was because the wharf had never previously been permitted. So we went the whole nine yards and we got an official permit, which in this case might only need to be updated. It's just that that might be a consideration when you go to change the number, size, and placement of the floats.
And to our benefit, DEP has said that replacement for these structures will be granted by permit, by rule. So they'll ignore them for two weeks, and when they don't give us an answer, it will automatically be approved. And that came out recently after the storm, early on.
I thought that included the idea that you were raising the platform, that statement.
Also storm damage. Like the float, obviously, it changes its elevation with high tide and low tide.
Correct, yeah.
But it was damaged significantly during the storm event. So if there is a permit, it'll be granted permit by rule to get it back in service as quickly as possible. As I know right now, we still won't do anything until TOPMB formally requests.
But ahead of time, I'll talk to Chris about permitting just in general down there, and it'll give me a good understanding too.
I think that pretty much covered that?
I think so.
All right.
All your questions answered, Bronwyn?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And I would imagine this would be a recurring conversation, probably at a soon meeting.
Yep.
And with that, we are done with old business, and we're now on to new business. The first item of new business would be a selection of a bid for the Robin Hood Road culvert replacement project, specifically just the culvert and retaining walls. We received three different bids, they were in your packet, ranging from $104,000 and changed, $116,000 and changed.
All of these are reputable businesses, and they would all be a pleasure to do business with. I would make a motion that we accept the Concrete Systems Incorporated bid for a total of 104,253.
Second.
I'm all for it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. And the, the next is selection of a bid for the project as a whole, less the specific construction of the culvert and retaining walls, but including the crane placement of those. So that's the whole project. And we had a low bid from Bedard Excavation at 229.75. We had four bids total and a high bid from Crocker Construction at 499.625.
Shows how busy Crocker is.
And we did reach out to Charlie, we did reach out to Pine Tree. Pine Tree is comfortable with Bedard, as was Charlie. I will say that there was one question about traffic control, just wanting to confirm that all of the folks that bid did understand that Robin Hood Road was to remain open throughout the project, though where that gets bunched up, it will be one lane. That question arose because Crocker's line was $78,000 there, whereas Bedard's was $12,000, but we were confirmed by the engineer. Everyone was aware, so.
Roger.
So I move that we accept the, the low bid of 229.075 from Bedard.
And Rich seconded all those.
All in favor?
Aye.
Favor?
And how much of this money is coming from FEMA?
We were, we were approved for $330,000, roughly $330,000 from FEMA. I should have had that included here with the packet. We initially were only going to be approved for around the 300, but we did appeal and got the extra money. So most of this project.
That and the stream crossing, between that and the stream crossing grant, it should be covered.
Fantastic. Good work, everybody.
And just as one last thing on those projects, we have a couple of easements to formally get put into deed, where those were acknowledged. And there will be in the June-ish region, a community event set up on Robin Hood Road for everyone to meet with the engineer and share their thoughts, concerns, ideas about traffic and the project. And with that, we will have, we had no items for signature on today's agenda, but we will have folks sign the abatement rejection. And I turn this back over to you for public comment.
Is there any public comment? Oh, Lisa?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to what Jonathan said about the grant that the Shellfish Committee is considering applying for. It was my understanding at that meeting that that grant money is only, can only be used for equipment or material. So they are considering applying for the grant to, in particular, clear up the situation at the bedroom pole where the ramp and the access to the bay was, I guess, quite destroyed from the storm. And they're considering using their conservation hours to do the labor for that process. But they're hoping that if they get the grant and that money is being distributed as applications come in and are awarded, and it will continue until the money is exhausted. And so that's what they're, that's what they hope to obtain if in fact they get that $5,000 grant. That's what they plan to do with it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, any more comment? Bob?
Yeah, going back to the personal property tax. I guess I'm still a little bit confused on that. If I understood correctly, the personal property tax applies basically across the board and not just to businesses. Is that correct?
Yes.
Sounds right?
Yeah.
So, and, and there is, there is or might be a limit. He used a thousand as a, an example, but he said, don't quote me on that. Do we know if there's some sort of a finite limit as to evaluation as to what needs to be reported and does not need to be reported?
I think what he was talking about with that limit, Bob, was in fact that it would be unconstitutional for a town to set a threshold limit, because then a town would in effect be creating their own exemption. There was none, he tried to clarify that a little bit after, but it did get a little bit murky.
Yeah. Does home rule enter into this at all?
No, it's the Constitution.
Constitution overrides it.
Home rules entered into it for the last 30 years, and we haven't done it, but, but they're both right, it's part of the Constitution, yes.
It just, it, I, I just have to question, what's the ulterior motive on this? If the state is all of a sudden pursuing this, when they know most of the towns in the state don't do it? There's something going on.
There are only 60, he said, that didn't do it.
65 were on the bad list.
Right.
One is now complied.
Town of two.
The town of two, right.
Not even a town, a plantation.
Delete the recording of this, this board meeting, and Allison's not going to publish any minutes. And this meeting didn't happen tonight. And this meeting didn't happen tonight.
Okay. The, I also had a question about the annual evaluations that are going on. Are evaluations being done on all the town employees?
Well, that is the idea, that's the goal. I mean, it, it's a common goal in human resource management that at the end of the year, there's a, a meeting with the employee and, and looking at the job description and how would, how well did you do all this stuff and what areas might need improvement? Or you've been wonderful. Thank you very much. The idea is to have an objective assessment and a, a report in the personnel file that future supervisors or it's, a personnel file is confidential, so only the employer and the employee are, are looking at it. But it really should happen for all employees. It's something that I think has been a goal, but hasn't been achieved. So we've been trying to start over, I guess you would say.
Is, is there a list of who's going to be evaluated?
Well, we could, I mean, the, the list of town. That's an interesting question, Bob. As someone who's somewhat overwhelmed by the process itself, there was a starting point, but do, do you have everybody on the, the, the fire chief, the transfer station manager in attendance, office, staff? And beyond that, I don't, I'm not sure.
I, I guess my question was, you know, what about people like the animal control officer, the harbor master, shellfish officer?
I think all of those people should actually have an evaluation, whether it will happen this year in a timely fashion. I'm not prepared to take an oath on that one.
Will, will it include the surveyor of wooden bark?
Absolutely, Bob.
And the sealer of weights and measures too.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Any more public comment? Aria?
A recap of what we discussed at our, our rec committee meeting that Jonathan alluded to earlier, which is, and, and Rich, you mentioned it as well. From the rec committee's perspective, you know, we're not looking to take over an event that the fishermen have already implemented themselves. And we've not been asked to take over blessing of the fleet by the, by the fishermen. So we want to be very careful to stay in our lane and not Bigfoot anyone. And so we were, we understood that one of the questions was liability for the town. But to the extent that Rich has already answered that, which is whoever's on the wharf, they're covered. And they don't need a committee to grant them access to coverage. I would just offer that as a, a caution from our committee. Keeping in mind what we've been asked to do and what we've not been asked to do. And then secondly, to Bronwyn's points, you know, from an HR industry standard, you know, those who are on the full-time payroll, yes, it's a great opportunity to have evaluations, to offer feedback and see what seems still relevant in an employee's job description, what should be retweeted. And those are all good opportunities for the municipality and the employee to review on even a quarterly basis. But I understand that we don't have the capacity, and we don't have anyone in the position to review employees in that, in that time span. But it's nice to see that it's been reactivated as, as a consideration. It also allows folks who are part of our municipal team to offer feedback about what makes sense in, in the work that they do in service to the town. So thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? I don't see anybody, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Night, everybody.